As a public official, you will be required to take an oath to uphold and preserve the Constitution of the United States and to the Kansas Constitution. When is the last time you undertook a serious study of the Constitution? And can you identify one or two areas where you feel the Constitution is being violated today?
Well, yeah, I mean, I have, uh, I have, I have a constitution, both the US and the state constitution in my studio, in my, where, in my workplace. It's handy all the time. I can't remember everything. Sometimes I can quote articles, sections. The Constitution is around me all the time.
How will you protect the rights of your constituents regardless of your opinions or their beliefs?
Okay, the people that vote for me, I am a write-in candidate, Mark Pows, M-A-R-K-P-O-W-L-S. I'm not running for office. I'm not doing it again ever. If the public wants me to be forced into duty, in other words, if they want me, if they want to order me, and this is the way it should be. If you want to, if the public wants to order me to work and represent them, to be the wedge between the people, the Constitution, and the municipal corporation we call the City of Garnet. Now, I'm not against the City of Garnet. Do not take me wrong. We have to have government. We have to have a city municipality. The job of a commissioner is to be the wedge between the people and this municipal government, which can be abusive. Okay? It wants to grow. Write my name in and vote me to work. In other words, order me to serve. Then I will be a wedge to protect their rights to life, liberty, and to own and control their own property within reason. That's, that's how you protect everyone. It's, it's based on the Constitution. There are many laws, many codes, I should say, and ordinances here in the City of Garnet that basically completely ignore our first declaration in our Kansas Bill of Rights. So that would be my job, would be that protector, that guardian. And of course, there are other duties involved to make sure that the municipality is solvent.
How will you make choices for the entire city when faced with competing ideas and voices?
There's kind of a stronghold of, of people. There's movers and shakers in the, in the City of Garnet who have wealth and are active and basically force their will upon those people out there who, who don't want to live in an environment that they want to live in. Here's, here's my deal. We have different people in the City of Garnet with different ideas. Do not push your ideas on other people and do not make them pay for things you want by using the city municipality. My job is to make sure that the rights of people are not being infringed and to make sure that they're not being made to follow a code or an ordinance or pay for something or suffer the consequences of rising utilities because the city municipality by way of the movers and shakers who are controlling the City of Garnet want everybody else to pay for their needs or their wants or their desires. Okay? We're all different, but if you want to do something, do it. Don't use government to make others pay for what you want. And yes, if you write my name in, like I said, my name, my name will not be on the ballot. If you write my name in and spell it correctly, you are ordering me to go in and defend your rights.
What is more important, acting in response to the will of the people or acting in the way city officials believe is the best course of action?
The city municipality, uh, needs to focus only and primarily on infrastructure and their utility departments to make sure that the services that they are providing the residents of the City of Garnet are being served. Anything beyond that, marketing, branding, putting on events, things like that, is not within its primary purpose of why we even have a municipal government. I hope people understand that. Where the line should be drawn as far as the will of the people, which, you know, it's only a certain percentage of the public that goes to baseball games and sends their kids to play, you know, baseball or whatever or certain recreational activities. Those people that are not interested in those activities should not be paying for that, nor should they have their taxes raised, their utility taxes raised in order to fund any part of that. Okay? So there, yeah, there's a balance there. Um, you know, do you respond to the will of the people? I'm sorry, but the will of the people is not always constitutionally pursuant. It's selfish. Uh, the job of the municipality is to serve the general welfare. In other words, you can't make people pay for things they do not care about or use. So we have to be very careful there. So the will of the people can't always be, uh, served by the city municipality. And again, that's where honest and intelligent commissioners need to be put in place in order to make sure those things are done correctly. Okay? Decisions do have to be made. That, that is the job of the city manager and the staff. Those people are the ones that are working in the city municipality. The city commissioners have to oversee that and just simply make sure that they're doing it the right way without infringement upon the people or in abuse of the state's constitution as written and ratified. Especially the original ordinance of the Kansas Constitution followed by the 20, um, declarations or sections in the Bill of Rights. Those are primary and those must be protected. So basically the commissioners are there to make sure that the city municipality is operating and functioning to serve their purpose. But at the same time, they're not allowed to violate, um, the Kansas ordinance or the 20 Bill of Rights. Anything beyond that in the Constitution also has to be pursuant to those first things. The preamble, the ordinance, actually it's in this order, uh, the ordinance, the preamble, and the 20 sections in the Bill of Rights. If there's an article that's in violation of any part of the first part of the Kansas Constitution, then it is in violation and should not be followed by the city municipality or the commissioners. Okay? There's a sequence of importance. Okay?
Should city commissioners write and adopt specific policies? Or should the details of these policies be crafted and implemented by unelected boards, outside specialists, or the city attorney?
I do not believe in committees. I do, we have, we, we elect and pay. We elect and compensate three commissioners to represent the people. Then you have people within the city municipality who work, uh, to try to make sure that services are provided to the public. It's not supposed to be the other way around. The public pays a utility tax to help fund the municipal corporation called the City of Garnet so they can perform their services to make sure the city runs properly. The, the commissioners should be responsible for adopting all things. It makes no sense for three elected commissioners to delegate their responsibilities, their duty by oath. Cannot delegate their responsibility to unelected, uh, non-governmental agencies. These people are not authorized to make decisions on behalf of the taxpayer. The, most, most people do not consent to this practice. This, this is a practice that comes out of the United Nations. It's, uh, it helps promote their agendas so they get implemented. And their excuse is, well, we're building these committees, uh, so the people can be better represented. No, the voter elects three commissioners. The voter just needs to do a better job of electing commissioners, not on popularity or whether they're their friend or they know so-and-so, but elect commissioners who know their written constitutions and will obey their oath to that. And most certainly, the city attorney should not be, uh, telling the commissioners what to do. My goodness. An attorney has no authority over an elected commissioner. The commissioners serve only the people. That's why we elect them. If they serve the municipal corporation, then the corporation would just hire them. They would just hire whoever they want. So that doesn't make any sense. No, I, I do not like committees. Um, they don't belong there. We have three commissioners. They're elected. If you want more representation, then the, the commissioners should have been increased to five commissioners, like, uh, Bridget Breckisen, former commissioner, attempted to do, and all of the voters in the City of Garnet also thought they had voted for, uh, several years back to increase the commissioners to five commissioners so there would be a broader representation. If you have that, you don't need these unelected committees to make all these decisions. Moving on.
As a steward of taxpayer dollars, how do you approach balancing the demands for city service against the city and county tax burden on the average citizen?
As a steward of taxpayer dollars, um, you know, the, the only demands that should be placed on the City of Garnet is sewer, electrical, gas, water, um, infrastructure. Anything beyond that, the City of Garnet should not be doing in the first place. Okay? But we've got people out there that are demanding a lot, a lot of things that are personal to them. And as far as sporting events and activities, anything outside of the, the grounds, you know, taking care of the infrastructure so the people can use that infrastructure, those should all be controlled and funded by nonprofit organizations. And yes, that would include our golf course. Now, there's a public-private connection with the golf course that I'm not so fond of as well, where there aren't that many people that use that golf course. But yet, the City of Garnet and this private entity that functions on the golf course are sharing expenses. Okay? Now, I'm not going to get into that now, but if you want someone to get into that and fix that problem, you'll have to write my name in. Mark Pows, M-A-R-K-P-O-W-L-S. On November 5th, Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. And I guarantee you, I will tackle many of these issues where there's conflict of interest or there's a public-private relationship between the city municipality and private organizations. Those things will be taken care of gently and professionally.
As you understand it, is the taxation of your home or commercial use property lawful? If so, does this taxation cripple economic development in Garnet, Kansas?
Well, I already know. I mean, I, it's in the Constitution. The very first thing in the Constitution in, in 1861, when Kansas became a state, in other words, a country, a sovereign, independent country, uh, and became a member of our voluntary union, um, in the United States of America, um, that ordinance says that land will be taxed. In other words, the government will have the authority and the jurisdiction, the power delegated to it by the people to tax land to fund government. That means state, county, city. It does not mention your personal property. It doesn't mention your commercial buildings. Anything you buy and pay for or build on said land is not supposed to be taxed. Okay? So the taxation of your home and commercial use property is most certainly and undeniably unconstitutional and a direct violation and, and, and infringement upon the individuals in the state of Kansas, all across the state of Kansas. Anybody that owns a home and your home is valued, assessed, valued, and taxed in order to fund government, um, as well as commercial use buildings, your bar, you know, ranchers and, you know, anybody that's in business that has a barn or any kind of building or structure that's on said land and it's assessed and taxed, that is a direct violation of the original ordinance, which has never changed and can't change, and your first, uh, declaration in the 20 Bill of Rights of the Kansas Constitution. It's theft. Okay? And that has to change. Now, my, my solution to that is, yeah, land must be taxed. It's, it's the agreement. It's the contract between the people, uh, and the governments within the state of Kansas. You cannot change that. If you're living here in Kansas, the people have to abide by that ordinance as well as the government. So land is the only thing that's mentioned in that ordinance. Therefore, that's the only thing that they can tax. Now, we can put it up for a vote of the people or your state legislators can, uh, decide if they need to raise that tax on the land and abolish all other unconstitutional taxation as far as, you know, taxing your personal property, which would be your home and your commercial use buildings and barns, whatever. Those are your personal property. Uh, then, then we could put it up for a vote and raise it to something like 18.5%. Now, the farmers would love that because they're being taxed at a rate for agri, agri-use land. They're being taxed at a rate of around 33% of the mill. Business owners are being taxed at 25, around 25% of the mill. Just, just for having a commercial building. Uh, residents are 11.5% of the mill, I believe. Right now, you're being taxed on your land and your home, which the assessor comes in and has continually assessed your homes at inflated values so they can tax you more on your home. That's their variable taxation. Uh, it's their golden calf. Okay? Is your home. Land should be a flat rate for everyone regardless of your use. And if, if they need to raise it to 18.5%, um, I came up with that number doing some mathematical calculations. I don't want to get into it, but 18.5%. If the government cannot operate and fund itself on land being taxed at 18.5% equally across the board, then they're spending and wasting money in ways they shouldn't. Okay? They need to live within their means and the people need to live within their means. Okay? If the government's living outside of its means, then the, the private sector cannot live within its means as well and plan for the future. Okay? This is, this is a big problem and it needs to be taken care of. And city commissioners can help, but our problem is they don't know these things. They don't, they're, I don't know why they don't know these things. You know, anyone that's going to run for public office should know, number one, know their constitution. Actually constitutions, but mainly their state constitution first. And then understand it the way it historically was ratified. And, uh, and then make sure that they always have that document with them whenever, whenever they are in a public meeting of commissioners. Yeah, go ahead.
Should any part of the city budget be shielded from cuts? And if so, which area?
Yeah, the only thing that should be shielded from cuts would be the utility departments and infrastructure. Anything dealing with infrastructure and the utility departments and the administrative, uh, sector within city hall. I mean, we have to have that. Okay? Now, what we don't need and, you know, there, there are things I've mentioned already that we do not need that are outside of the primary function and purpose of even having a municipal city government. Those things should be axed. The city needs to cut some things. And more of that money needs to go into the utility departments, you know, um, pay your people better, get better training so they feel good about what they're doing. And, uh, you know, just get a lean, mean, functioning city municipality that focuses on the job of serving the public. I should say the general welfare of the public, not just the whims of the public. In areas that everybody uses, not just a select few or a group or, you know, an individual or entity. Okay?
Nearly every public official is faced with questions of public debt. What is your opinion of using debt and how should it be paid off?
I don't like debt personally. I have debts. I have debts that stem all the way back to the housing market collapse. Where I literally, I was, I was in construction, had just finished building the last commercial building in the City of Garnet, designing it and building it, working as the general contractor, the architect, and the, the main construction crew on that, 2009, 2010. A long story, but, um, yeah. I don't like debt. The city municipality should not be in debt. We, we need to do whatever's necessary, even if it means cutting non-essential departments to get out of debt. I, you know, I don't, I'm not able to go to the city commission meetings. Once in a while, I'll watch them on Facebook. But I, if there, if the City of Garnet has, is carrying a lot of debt, that is extremely dangerous. It's dangerous for the municipal entity, but it's also dangerous for those they serve.
Do you believe the city's budget process ought to budget expenses to meet revenue goals? Or adjust revenues to meet budget and spending priorities?
You know, it's not about taxing people in order to fund all the things that we want to do in, in government. Again, if government, if the City of Garnet would focus only and primarily on infrastructure and making sure that the public is served through the utility departments and never to go beyond that function. And, and basically encourage the nonprofits who get a tax exemption for existing, let them handle everything else outside of that. That's why they're allowed to be a nonprofit. But yet, I think they're, I think we're missing something there. The City of Garnet is reaching far outside of their primary reason for existing in the first place. And, uh, I think that budgets need to be in line with those primary purposes only and nothing more. Okay?
Does your interest in serving on the city commission stem from a personal interest or goal?
It, it's not a personal interest. It's not a goal. I'm going to be completely honest with the public, with the voter out there. I do not want to be a city commissioner. Okay? I do not want this job. My wife does not want me to have this job. Uh, that's, that's why I'm not on the ballot. This is why I'm not out campaigning. I'm not purchasing a whole lot of signs. The only signs I'm using is the 10, 10 signs that I had from the first time I ran. I've lost every election that I've ever ran for. Okay? The purpose is not to win, but it's, it's the chance to speak about the things that need to change. Every time I've ever run for an election, I've been able to speak to the public. Now, here in the City of Garnet, they have one public forum and it's by people who, I, really, I, I don't know why they do it. They have everybody thrown up on the stage, every level of government possible, and they only go an hour. And you want to, you want the public to know about these candidates? It's, it's a big waste of time. You need to take each office and have questions, good questions asked, like the questions that are being asked of me right now. These are good questions. And they're primarily focused on the, the job of a city commissioner. But, um, um, it, it's not a personal goal. I do not want to serve. I have better things to do on Tuesday evenings twice a month. And as a matter of fact, I told somebody, uh, a while back that if, if the public, if the voter orders me to work, in other words, you write my name in and you act, and I actually get more votes than the other two candidates, that's an order to go to work, to serve. I will not find any pleasure in showing up for those meetings on Tuesdays twice a month. And, uh, I've watched the meetings. They bore me. A lot of what they talk about is, uh, wasteful. It's a waste of time. A lot of it's outside of the purpose of government, of that government. And I'll, I'll be knocking a lot of this stuff down because we shouldn't be talking about it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But we have three commissioners and we need somebody up there, uh, to protect the people and to keep the, um, the municipal government lean and, you know, very effective and, and efficient. But they have to be pursuant to the state's constitution. It's not a personal goal. I have no agenda except to obey the Constitution and protect the rights of the people. That's really my goal. Okay? I will not enjoy my time in these meetings.
Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city commission? And why is serving on the commission important to you?
My goal is to realign the municipal government, uh, corporation with, uh, a pursuance to the Kansas Constitution. That is probably the, the most, um, the biggest violation going on presently right now for a long time with our, with our city commissioners. They, I don't think they read a constitution. They listen to an attorney, which is always going to guide them away from obeying a constitution. Um, so I, I would say that I'm, I would try my best to always oppose anything that that goes against or is in violation of the ordinance, for one thing, the Kansas ordinance, the preamble, which if you read the preamble, it's, it's extremely moral. And the 20 sections in the Bill of Rights that protects, you know, it gives government the responsibility, it orders the government the responsibility of protecting all 20 of these rights. And they're not being protected, they're being violated every minute of every day by our city and county commissioners and by our municipal government and county government and state government, okay?
What is your opinion of the city manager and the job he is doing?
Travis is our current city manager. I, I, I like Travis, I think he's doing a good job. I think he is kind of misguided because we have, I mean, they're doing things because they don't have commissioners to, you know, say, okay, this is where we draw the line, this is not pursuant to a constitution, we're in violation. Is there another way? Is there something else we can do? Is there something we can cut? We've got to do this. We can't always burden the taxpayer in order to fund all the, you know, you know, I don't blame everything on Travis or the administrative staff or the utility departments. I just believe that our commissioners have dropped the ball and they're not, not paying attention. They, sometimes it just seems like they're there for their personal agenda or to help their friends or something that they care about. I'm kind of an outsider, I don't have a lot of friends, I don't keep a lot of friends. I can make a lot of friends, I just don't keep a lot of friends. I don't involve myself in all these nonprofit organizations, you know, to hang out with the guys or whatever. I don't belong to any of these organizations because if you do, you will have a conflict of interest. And you probably should not be serving in a public office because you're going to, you will have a conflict. You will want to serve those people in your clique. You know, I don't want to get into that right now.
What do you envision for the future of downtown Garnett?
Okay, what do I, what I envision for the future of Garnett is number one, troubles are coming. I wish I could say that, you know, good times are coming, but there is a potential that, you know, we're in a war. People, there's some people out there in complete denial. We are in a war, it's a domestic slash foreign war. And we are, we are fighting entities that are not American. We are, our system of, our federal republic, which is the entire system, our constitutional republics, which are in, the states are required to operate as constitutional republics. The US general government is required to operate as a constitutional republic. But the entire system, you know, the city, county, state and federal government is a federal republic where we do have differences. The problem is, is we have the United Nations, we have the WHO, we have the CDC, we have a completely usurped US general government that doesn't know where that line is. And they interfere with the domestic operations of our states. You know, things are getting, getting turned upside down the way we're supposed to operate. And my vision for Garnett would be that we need to return a little more power, you know, we, we do have local control in our constitution. We do have certain powers at the city level to control our own destiny. But our, the things we do still must be pursuant and not in violation of the original ordinance, the preamble and the 20 sections in the Bill of Rights of our state constitution. But we do have control over our own destiny within that limit. Okay, what I'd like to see done is I'd like to see the zoning code, you know, all the, all the zoning requirements and the codes reexamine to make sure that everything that we're doing here in the city of Garnett is pursuant and not pursuant to the Kansas Constitution, starting with those first three primary parts of the Kansas Constitution. And, you know, that would be a, a good beginning. I want to see our private sector freed up so they can actually make money and thrive and hire and build buildings, improve their buildings without being punished with a property taxation that's, shouldn't exist in the first place. There are so many things I would like to, like to do. And, you know, I will be one of three, actually one of four because I'll, I'll be going against an attorney as well because the attorneys follow a legal precedent that's not constitution. It's, they, they hate the constitution because it's, it's easy to follow, it's limiting. And they don't have control over a constitution. They like legal precedent and case law because then they can interpret law however they feel at the time. And they'll even lie. And I'm not afraid to say this publicly, I don't care if the attorneys out there hear what I'm saying. I've told them, I've been to a city commission meeting and, and said it. I don't care. They are causing commissioners to violate their oath to the Kansas Constitution repeatedly. Okay, so there are so many things, but a lot of things would be fixed if we would do things in pursuance to our state constitution, stay within those limits, follow the original ordinance. That would remove the tax burden on our homes and commercial-use buildings and it would level the land tax if done, if our legislature does it correctly and takes it seriously. And you can fight these things from the, from, from the city level. If you're a commissioner, you can push other city commissioners and, and educate other city commissioners and county commissioners across the state of Kansas to push a constitutional amendment to correct the taxation, the violating taxation on your homes and your personal property and your commercial buildings and so forth.
Would you like to make a closing statement to the voters?
Okay, final words, you know, personally, I, I've gone through everything. Again, I'm going to tell the public out there, the voter, I do not want this job. But I know that things need to be fixed. You need somebody in there that's not just going to say yes to everything. Somebody in there that's educated to what our constitutions mean. So when something does come up, you've got at least one commissioner in there who's going to say, I don't think so because right here in the constitution, it says. Okay? And, you know, our property taxes are out of control. You know, the taxation on your home and your land, your commercial-use property. You know, I've told that to, you know, the only, the only public forum that we had, I mentioned it. I got deer-in-the-headlight look when people said, well, what's, they were thinking, what are you talking about? You know, this is the way it's always been. What's this got to do with being a city commissioner? Well, it has everything to do with it because when you're a city commissioner, you're, you are elected to protect the rights of the people. But it also gives you a position where you can make a connection with all city commissions across the state of Kansas and city or county commissioners across the state of Kansas to bond together and agree that we are not supposed to be taxing our personal property. Personal property being the home you buy or build, your fence, your shed, your barn, your silo, your commercial-use buildings. Okay? Once that's done and the, your state legislature realizes that every city and county in the state of Kansas is on board with making this correction, even if it means raising the taxation on land to 18.5% to fund government. It's a flat rate. That way, the private sector can plan. That way, the government can plan. It's a set amount. If they want to raise it, then they have to put it up to a vote in November and let the people decide. If the people say, no, you're not getting a raise, you're going to have to cut, then the government will need to cut. And it better be something that's non-essential. You don't cut essential things, you cut the non-essential fat out of your budget. Okay? So what I'm saying is, I don't want to be there, I just want to get on with my life. I'm 63 years old. My dad worked for the city, retired from the city. I worked for Parks and Recreation for many years over the summers, starting at age 15, for a dollar seventy-five an hour. I know how things work. I was privileged and honored to, to have been able to serve the city of Garnett as a Parks and Recreation employee, getting paid very low wages at, at a very, very young age. And quit doing it when I went into the service. I served 22 years in the Kansas Army National Guard, retired after 22 years. And, you know, I like it here, but there are things that are wrong with the way our government operates. And this would be a better place for everyone, even the, even the people that wouldn't get the perks that they've been getting on the backs of other people who aren't interested in the things they're interested in. Yeah, there, there'd be a little, little inconvenience there, but we have all these nonprofits that really should be involved in their community more. They should be controlling the, you know, what happens on the baseball diamonds. And it would give them something they could be proud of. You know, the swimming pool, they could, you know, do a funding project and, and take over that operation. The city of Garnett should not be building swimming pools. That should be funded and paid for by the people who want it. A swimming pool does not serve the general welfare of the city of Garnett. Okay? The rules are simple, we just have to obey them. And if you want somebody in the city of Garnett who wants to serve the general public and to protect the general public, the general welfare of the public and keep them lean, effective, you know, well-funded, then write my name in. Mark Pows, M A R K P O W L S. And I will gladly serve the general welfare of the public. Thank you.